Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. We're going to read the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. We're running a few minutes behind. We were in another meeting, I'm sorry. And proclamation, whereas Hispanic Americans have made a lasting contribution to our nation's history, culture, and progress with faith, passion, hard work, and devotion to family, they have helped keep America a land of opportunity for all. Whereas the observance of Hispanic heritage began in 1968 as a week-long celebration under President Lyndon Johnson, and in 1988, President Ronald Reagan expanded it to 30-day celebration from September the 15th through October the 15th, which was enacted into law the same year. Whereas September 15th marks an independence anniversary of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, with Mexico and Chile celebrating their independence September the 16th and 18th. And whereas Hispanic Americans have played a vital role in our nation's prosperity, their contribution strengthens our economy, culture, and communities, reflecting the best American values. Whereas month we honor may, may Hispanic have shaped our nation and reaffirmed our commitment to opportunity, unity, and the American dream in generations to come. Now therefore, we James R. Knight Jr., Mayor of City of Hopkinsville, and Jerry Gillum, Judge Executive, Christian County, do hereby proclaim 15th through October 15th, 2025 Hispanic Heritage Month. In all of Hopkinsville and Christian County, we encourage all residents to join in us celebrating the generation of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our history and continue to shape our future. Signed and sealed on the 16th day of September of 2025. Thank you. Ms. Rachel? Sixteenth regular city council meeting to order here at six o'clock, and we call on Ward Five for the implication.
Thank you, Mayor. Please pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this beautiful day. We're grateful for this opportunity. We have to gather as a council. We're thankful for all that we've been given. We ask you this time to please watch over us and bless us that we will make wise decisions, that we'll be mindful of those that are suffering, especially watch over our first responders and our military. And we ask for thy Spirit to be with us at this time. We say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge, please. Thank you, Amy. All right. Item four, roll call.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Stallins.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner.
Here.
Councilmember Meek. Councilmember Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez.
Yep.
Councilmember Bill.
Here.
Councilmember Droul.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, item five is words and recognitions. We have none this evening. We'll be moving into public comments. If anyone would like to speak at the microphone for public comments, please come up and state your name and address at the microphone.
Grace Abernathy, 713 East Seventh Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Good evening, City Councilman Mayor Knight. I'm here tonight to speak in defense of Blue Streak. Blue Streak was built in 1912 as The Rex, one of Hopkinsville's first movie theaters. It was known for showing westerns and children's films. This makes it one of our only sites directly related to children's history. In the 19 teens, any kid under 10 could go to The Rex and see a movie for a nickel. This is central to the plot of one of Ted Poston's short stories, The Birth of a Notion, in which he tells the story of how the birth of a nation was never played at The Rex. I encourage you all to read it. Ted Poston may be Hopkinsville's most famous resident. Called the dean of black journalism, he became one of the first writers of color to be hired by a white mainstream paper in the 1930s in New York City. And Blue Streak is a direct link to him. It isn't just part of our history, it's part of our cultural identity, an identity that's slipping away one building at a time as we demolish our historic downtown. For me, this is a good enough reason by itself to save every historic building. But I realize it might not be enough for you, so let's talk money. Old buildings are expensive, but they're also part of what gives Hopkinsville a sense of place. They're the reason people want to come downtown. They make downtown special. And if you care for them, they can actually attract people and businesses to the downtown district, not to mention industries that are scouting out locations for new headquarters. Take Franklin, Tennessee. The city of Franklin has spent the last 40 years reclaiming its historic Main Street. In 2022, they recorded nearly 2 million visitors. These visitors directly generated $1.195 billion in Franklin in just that year. And nearly all of these visitors came just to shop and eat on Main Street. So taking care of your historic buildings can be really good for the economy. There's also financial help available to historic building owners. The National Park Service offers a number of grants for rehabilitation work. And the state of Kentucky has a rehabilitation tax credit for historic buildings, which combines state and federal funds to a total of 40% reimbursement on public buildings and 30% on private. So before you move to demolish another historic downtown building, I would recommend looking creatively, creatively into other options and take a constructive step towards the future that includes the past. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Kevin Covington, 7635 Pembroke Road. I'm in Pembroke. So I am a commercial recycler here. I provide a lot of recycling for Hopkinsville. Been doing it since 2009. I bought the recycling center in Pembroke from Ralph Combs in 2009, and then I brought Kentucky waste paper from Terry Bullock in 2010 and combined them and moved them to Pembroke. At the time, I had about 40 customers, commercial and industrial stuff, and then when the city started their program, I lost about half of those because the city provided the service for free on customers that I was charging. So then I had to kind of reestablish how I did my operation. So we currently have probably about 25 to 26 accounts through Clarksville all the way up to Central City. I have most of the industrial in Hopkinsville. The, the, I've come here today just to offer an opportunity for the city with the, with the issue that I understand for the, to continue their program. The plastic bottles and the break room recycling and stuff is a loser. I mean, if you bring me directly your bottles to my place, I would lose money trying to recycle them. It's, the market's terrible, that people don't keep them clean, you gotta sort them and all that stuff. So that, that, the bottles and stuff are, won't work unless somebody pays for it. The cardboard, my suggestion would be is that the city or the solid waste keeps all their containers for their cardboard where they have them and charge a trash rate for those containers. Pick them up, deliver them to me, and I'll, and I can recycle the cardboard. Then the city can make their money on, the, the solid waste can make the money on the, the service just like it's trash. And then I can get the, the cardboard and I can process it because I have enough equipment set up that I can handle the volume without any problems. That's just an o, o, offer that, an opportunity I'm offering to provide the service because there's a lot of the, the commercial accounts, like the restaurants and the liquor stores and those things can't have, don't have enough space for a roll-off box, but the, but the front-load containers work very well. So if there was a route set up twice a month or something like that where they service those accounts. Otherwise, I mean, you charge them, they just have to pay for it. I mean, that's, if they have to pay for it, they will. And that, that's the best solution I could think of to continue those services. Nobody from out of town is going to come in and be able to do something and make money. You can't haul air, which is what you haul when you haul loose cardboard and, and plastic bottles and those things, you're hauling air. And so it, it, it financially doesn't work. So my facility's in, with eight miles from most of those locations in town. So it's, it would be fairly feasible, I think, to do that kind of an operation. Otherwise, I personally, as a recycler for 16 years, I don't see anything that will work. I don't think anybody from out of town is going to come in and provide service. See, when you're talking about bidding it out, how are you gonna, what are you gonna do with me and already a provider? I have approximately 15 balers, two compacters, and multiple trailers and things, and boxes and other stuff already out that I have contracts with these industrial and commercial customers. So where do I fit into that? If you're talking about bidding this out. So I, I don't see how that would work with somebody that's been in relationships with these customers for this many years. So anyway, that's, I was just watched part of the video from the last time you guys met and saw the, the conversations and thought I would come in and provide a little, but this seemed like, didn't look like anybody knew that there was anybody else that did even recycling with the industrial parks. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that we do. And then, and City Salvage does some too, but I'm pretty much the only one that does cardboard and paper. And so just with the market fluctuations, I think it's, it's difficult for municipalities to, to manage that arrangement and stuff with, and, and have it set up where they can make money.
Okay.
So if there's any other, anybody has any questions, JR knows how to find me.
Yeah.
And I, I would be glad to try to help if I could.
Thank you, Kevin. It's Kate.
I'm Kate Russell, 138 Latham Avenue, and also Hopkinsville Brewing Company, 102 East Fifth Street. Mayor Knight and members of city council, thank you so much for taking the time to read the email I sent you over the weekend. I appreciate the two responses I received, and Mayor Knight, thank you for coming to see me today. I know you're all very busy and I appreciate your time. I won't bore you with rereading my email. In case you didn't read it, and that's okay, my inbox is also overflowing. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Blue Streak Printing Building on East Ninth Street. It stands next to the empty lot that used to be the Phoenix Building. The TLDR of my email is that I believe the preservation of downtown's historic buildings is key to the revitalization and economic success. As such, I would like the Blue Streak Printing Building to be given the same opportunity as the Train Depot, to be bought and rehabilitated by a private entity. Mayor Knight assured me today that a structural engineering report will be prepared before determining the fate of the building, but I would like to bring the council's attention to organizations such as the Kentucky Heritage Council, which serves as the State Historic Preservation Office. One of its many responsibilities is the identification, protection, and preservation of historic buildings. In addition to conducting surveys of historic properties, they can also facilitate federal and state historic rehabilitation tax credits. The last section of their mission statement reads, "KHC has partnered with local, state, and federal agencies, preservation organizations, local governments, and interested citizens to fulfill our mission, which is integral to making communities more livable and has a far-ranging impact on issues as diverse as economic development, jobs creation, heritage tourism, affordable housing, community revitalization, environmental conservation, and quality of life." I believe this mission statement dovetails perfectly with what the city's goal seems to be, to make our community more livable through revitalization and improve citizens' quality of life. We simply need to ask for help. The fact is, just about any structure can be saved if given a plan and in some cases, a lot of money. Trust me, I know this one personally. We already lost the Phoenix and the Holland Opera House, and I believe losing another historic building could derail the momentum we're building in downtown's revitalization efforts. Please consider involving the Kentucky Heritage Council in the planning for the building of the Blue Streak Printing's future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Tammy Van Buren. I live at 2003 South Main Street. I see a few familiar faces, and some maybe I'm meeting for the first time tonight. So Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my thoughts. Besides being a homeowner in a historic district, I'm also treasurer of the Hopkinsville Historic Community. Hopefully some of you know what that is, but I would venture to say that some of you don't. We do have a Facebook play, page, so please check us out. We will approve you to join. And we do post a lot of events there that we do to promote the historic community, which is why I'm here tonight to talk about the Blue Streak as well. And so in recent months, we've decided that we wanted to expand our bylaws. And our bylaws cover when we started back in 2022. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was started in 2022. Our idea was we would promote things within the two local historic districts, and I think we've done a fairly good job at that. We have activities, just had a potluck Sunday with our group, and would love for you all to attend. We did have one city council member there and in the past have had another. So please join our events. When we do have them, we would love to have you. But we do promote that community. And I will tell you before, that organization in 2022, I had lived there since 2004, and I might could have told you the names of five neighbors. I didn't know them because they were my neighbors. I knew them because Mrs. Pam Goolsby was my daughter's librarian at Indian Hills. I, you know, Jerry Lynn Richardson was my grandson's kindergarten teacher. So those are the relationships we had, and it wasn't that neighborhood community that we, we needed. And we found the last couple of years that we've seen that grow. I know a lot of my neighbors now, and, you know, we look out for each other and we help each other. Today, when I needed somebody to pick up my granddaughter, I had a neighbor that could do that. So, so with that being said, we have a lot of other purposes in our bylaws, and I'll just read a few of those off to you. Preserve historical information. I think we do a pretty good job of that. We work with my friend Grace and Alyssa, and we have a lot of information available to us on the historic buildings here in Hopkinsville. So I would check the box. We do a pretty good job at that one. Encourage rehabilitation and preservation. We have been very focused on our historic districts, very local to us. But in recent months, we recognized that we need to expand that purpose and include downtown. We talked with the fiscal court about the Weber Building and very much appreciated the work that they have done to put a pause on the demolition of the Weber Building until we can see if there are some more viable solutions that would save that very important building to historic downtown. We foster education on history. So we partner with the museum on a lot of different things. We had workshops this year for the first time that taught us a lot about the history of our homes and of the buildings, and what do we save, and what can we get rid of. So that's been, I believe, a very good purpose. And then one of the last ones I wanted to talk to you about, our last purpose was create liaisons with related organizations to support the history of Hopkinsville. And I think this is why I'm here tonight, is to get to know you all and tell you there are other options. And so, you know, the plan of action that I would ask that you take is to vote no on the demolition of the Blue Streak Building. It was nice to hear Kate say she met with the mayor today and that you too are thinking about taking a pause, just as the fiscal court did on the Weber Building. So thank you for that. But also, I want to let you know, we are here. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. Someone mentioned to me today that we should be fundraising, and we're here to assist with that. And we would like to offer our services with that. I even brought receipts today. So if anybody wants to make a donation, I will write your receipt right out. Okay? So again, thank you for your time. I know I'm probably above my three minutes, but again, thank you. Any questions, I'll hang around till after the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come to the podium? All right, moving into item seven, that will be mayor's comments. We had a huge summer salute. My hat is off to my team and our team. Hopkinsville Fire Department, Police Department, Mike Perry, Toby, Public Works, they've done a great job. Even with the finance team, everyone here, everyone had a hand in it. Thank you all. We could not have done summer salute without you. We appreciate everything that went on, and without, we could not have done it without the whole team. This wasn't just one part of the team, it was the whole team. Fred Atkins Park, we had a ribbon cutting today. We renamed that today over on Second Street. It's a great day for that. Ms. Paulette was there, and she gave some nice, beautiful words. She spoke, and Mike Perry and Toby, and thank y'all very much for that. But council, y'all give us the way to rename that for Mr. Atkins and makes it a vital place in his ward where he was. Council member. The chamber breakfast will be Thursday. It'll be a Q and A type breakfast right there. We'll have a lot of questions and answering for everyone. We have, say thank you to Secretary Noel for coming in and doing the town hall meeting with us. We have another town hall mayor's legislative meeting on October the 16th. We'll have Mr. Richardson, Thomas, and Dawson here to be talking to us on the 16th of October. Hope everyone comes out and has a good time with that, on that. Public Works, thank you for all your hard work with all the grass cutting you've been doing. I know it's been a lot of hot, hot and dusty days here lately, but thank you for keeping it done and cleaned up and helping keep the city looking good. The chamber renovation is still going on. We got a little left to do, but we'll have The chamber renovation is still going on. We got a little left to do, but we'll have that done hopefully in the next upcoming weeks. We'll have everything back to normal in here. Now, for the Blue Streak. The Blue Streak, on that, we own the Blue Streak Building, we own where the property where the Phoenix is, we own where the Holland Opera House is, all up and down through there. We're roughly a million dollars in on that piece of property right now. Between the demolition of the Opera House, Lee's Game Room, and CO violations and all that, we're roughly a million dollars in. We give $500,000 for the Blue Streak Building. It's public record, nothing to hide. Now, our next step on this, Chief Futral and Code Enforcement is to go, got a structural engineer coming in to check this building. We are going to look at it very closely. We're going to look at it and see what it's going to need, what it's not going to need, and what kind of dollar sign it's going to take. And if he says it's a tear down, then we will have to step back and look at it as a tear down on this, you know. Tearing down's going to cost money, too. That's going to be another $100,000 or so. But we are looking at it. We're looking at all the options with the Blue Streak. And what we will do is look at it very closely. I have a great idea in my head what I think it ought to look like, because I think we're on the busiest street, most traffic count in Hopkinsville is right there on Main at Ninth and Main. Our busiest vehicle count is right there on Main. We need to put back a business on that corner. It does not need to be a green space. It needs residential upstairs on the second and third floor. That is my view of it. You know, I don't want it to be a parking lot. I want to see buildings, and it will have the same architectural design that you see what we have now in our downtown. Tom and Holly have done had this conversation in CDS, how this is supposed to look. And me and Tom's had that conversation again today about it. We are still moving forward. Do we tear the building down? I can't say either way. I'm waiting on a structural engineer on that. Yes, we were very, very lucky to find someone that loved the Train DPO, the Train Depot on that. That gentleman loves trains. If you don't think he loves trains, go to Henderson, go to California. Look on his webpage is what he does with train depots, you know. I admire the man that can do that, and I'm very happy he's going to do that for us in Hopkinsville on that. But with this building, we are going to look at it in every option, you know. It is a beautiful building. I did not want to see the Phoenix Building tore down. I have many memories in there when it was Cassidy Kitts Corner. I remember the barber shop that was right there. We'd go in and get a haircut on Saturday morning. But when the building is too far gone, it is too far gone for taxpayers' money. Now, if someone else is willing to put up that money, then that's okay, too. But I talked to three gentlemen today, wanted to know what we were doing about it. And they are very large investors already in the downtown, what they wanted to know what we were going to do. First, that I told them, this is what we are. We are working with the architect, with the engineer to tell us what we are. And that's where we're at with the Blue Streak right now. If it gets tore down, I cannot tell you yet. We're waiting on Chief Futral now, and he's waiting on his structural engineer to give us them, our guidelines on that and codes. All righty, and now, we will move on into item eight, reports from officer and committees and guest speakers. Salvation Army is up. If you would come on up and talk us all about it, Derek.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I want to thank you all for allowing us to come. Just want to briefly introduce myself for those that don't know, is I'm Lieutenant David Donigan. I'm the core officer here for the Salvation Army in Hopkinsville and the Penney Row area. Before we get started, I just want to give a little, a little brief history about the Salvation Army. The Salvation Army began in London in 1865 with William and Catherine Booth, and their vision was simple, yet profound, to bring the gospel of Jesus Christ to the poor, the hungry, the homeless, and the forgotten. They took the church to the street, preaching in open air and feeding hungry and offering hope to those in society. By 1878, the movement had took on a new name, the Salvation Army, adopting a military-style structure symbolizing its fight against sin, poverty, sin, poverty, and injustice. But instead of using weapons, our army uses compassion, service, and the love of Jesus Christ. Today, the Salvation Army serves in over 130 countries around the world. And here in the United States, we've been at work for more than 140 years. So, you're probably asking yourself, okay, Lieutenant, that's great. What does that mean to us? The Salvation Army moved to Hopkinsville in 1916. So, let me bring it home a little bit more. Our corps here in Hopkinsville serves Christian Todd and Trigg County. In surrounding areas, we have a footprint in many of our programs in the Penney Row Development District. We serve families, veterans, single parents, and children, each with their own struggles, but all deserving dignity and hope. Here's just a few of our programs, our Residential Shelter, our Center of Hope, our LifeNav Outreach Street, our street outreach, our rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing, our Veteran Services Programs, our soup kitchen and food pantries, not to mention our youth and family programs. Shortly after coming here, my wife and I, one of the things we like to do, as you know, we move around, is we came in a week early and we toured the facility. You see, Hopkinsville is just more than just a place for us to be in a season of time. This is our home. Our children go to school here. We pay taxes to live here. Our home is in this community. So, what can we do to better this community while we live here? So, we began to look around, and we start seeing that, are we proud of where we're at? So, many of you will know, we began to clean up our corner of the street. We moved the people from eating outside, we moved them to the inside. We've got people that clean up our trash from, that are around our facility so that the people in our community, we can be good stewards of the community so that we can be proud of where we go each and every day, and not only that, we can be proud of the people that come in. Shortly after getting here, I realized that prior to COVID, Salvation Army had acknowledged the fact that our shelter was built in 1975. It's an old building. If you've never toured it, please come by. Myself or Alicia, our Director of Social Service, would be glad to give you a tour. In addition to that, our Life Navigation Building, which is the hub of all of our social service programs here in this, not only Hopkinsville, but in the Penney Row region, was built in the 60s. It was an old post office that became a church that is now serving as our Life Navigation Hub. So, as I looked around, and I began to look back at briefs and what I need to do in this community, I began to see that somebody did a mission planning study and determined that there is a need. So, not only is there a need, I then during our time here, become vested even deeper in this community. You see, I'm only here for a season, but my daughter grew up here. If you want that story, please see me afterwards. I'll tell you that story, but my daughter grew up here. So, now I have a vested interest because this is her home. So, as we begin to look and as we begin to see, how can we better this community in our time here, we had the opportunity to receive a, you know, God works in mysterious ways because an opportunity came our way. And we were able to continue on with our studies to determine whether it is feasible or the need to build a new shelter is available. Mr. Chris Head here is from our divisional headquarters, and I'm not going to get into all of what he's going to get into. But I want you to know, what we want to present to you today is the findings of that study and to give you a vision of what the Salvation Army sees for our future here in Hopkinsville. So, I'm going to turn it over to Chris. I don't want to get this shocking off, so I'll let him talk about it. But most importantly, I want to thank you all for receiving me and my family here in this community and to let you know that we are here until we're not here, and this is our community. Just like it's your community, this is our community. My son goes to Millbrook. My daughter goes to Christian County High School. She'll attend the new Christian County Hop Town School next year. My wife and I, we grocery shop here. This is our community, and we want to see our community flourish, just like each and every one of you in this room.
Good evening. My name is Chris Head. I'm the Senior Divisional Resource Development Director for Kentucky-Tennessee Division of the Salvation Army. It's an extremely long title for, I ask people for money. I'm not here to do that tonight, so everybody relax. As Lieutenant Donigan had spoke, we have obviously, and for a long time now, realized our shelter is in need of repair, need of renovation, need of expansion, quite frankly. We all understand that the homeless problem grows, not only here in this community, but in all our communities across Kentucky. And so, as he said, we have spent several years now planning. The Salvation Army is anything but diligent in making sure that we're good stewards of the money that we receive from each community. Every dollar that comes in from Hopkinsville stays in Hopkinsville. It doesn't go to Louisville. It doesn't go to our territorial headquarters in Atlanta, and it doesn't travel to London where our international headquarters are. Every dollar stays here in this community. And so, as we've looked at the money that's come in, we've also looked at the need of the community. What truly is it that we provide, service that we provide to Hopkinsville that is needed? Obviously, that's within itself, time and time again, as our shelter, as our food pantry, as our soup kitchen, and most importantly, is our assistance money, and I'll explain on that here in a minute. The most important thing that I always want everybody to take away from our mission statement is very simple. Our mission is very, is not very complex. We're simply here to meet human need. Human need being hunger, shelter, and assistance. You obviously know where our buildings are. They're clearly two blocks away. We own basically an entire city block. The shelter takes up a portion of it. Our Life Navigation Center takes up a portion of it, and our old thrift store building takes up another portion of it. We have the building across the street that houses our chapel and some of our offices. The services that we provide outside of shelter and outside of the shelter, our rent assistance, food, whether it be food boxes that people come in and pick up weekly, or daily services from the soup kitchen, utility assistance, water, electric, weather-related shelter. When it gets cold here in a few months, you'll be turning to us to operate a white flag center, where we'll take in people overnight when the temperature gets below 32. We do clothing, furniture, food vouchers, fans in the summer, and assorted other things that we can provide to the community. These stats are important because it shows our impact here in this community. These are last year's, so the entire year of 2024. We did 40, almost 49,000 meals to those facing hunger here in this community. We distributed almost 45,000 food boxes. Each food box, each food box usually has enough meals in it for a family of four for roughly four days. So, think about that. We provided 8,700 nights of shelter, 8,700 nights of shelter, people being off the streets of Hopkinsville and in the county. We distributed 9,100 articles of clothing. And what we're always known for every year, which you'll see here in the next month or so, we'll be out there ringing that bell, and we'll be out there signing up people for our Angel Tree program, making sure that every child that doesn't have the opportunity gets the opportunity to have Christmas. This is where it becomes more about our business than our nonprofit. Over a five-year period, and if we actually extended that to this year, we just did some number crunching as we were sitting here, we've actually put $3.6 million into this community. We've done that by paying the landlords here in this community rent assistance for those that couldn't afford it. We put it in as utility assistance, your water company, your electric company. All those things receive the funds that we get, whether it's from grants, whether it's from donors, whether it's from a variety of different sources, the money, again, stays here. At this point, we're a pretty viable business for you. $3.6 million going back into the economy here in Hopkinsville. You'll have to excuse me, this isn't my computer, so I'm figuring this out on the fly. As we've talked about, we have done a couple of years of studies. We did a mission planning study to make sure the programs we're providing were the correct ones for this community. They are. Shelter is the need. Food is the need. We did a feasibility study. Is it feasible to build another shelter here, a new shelter, not another, to replace the existing one? And then, we did a campaign study. Would the community support financially the need that we would have to build a new shelter? We did a lot of talking to a lot of people here, whether it was some of you that I think were interviewed, a lot of business leaders, a lot of our board members, and various others, state representatives and such that participated in our study. So, this is your all's voice. It's not something that we just came up with. The consultant that did this, Arthur Alley, is a known Salvation Army consultant. They do this all across the southeast, so they understand what the Salvation Army is and how it impacts communities. We did an organizational vision, a draft for case support. We tried to figure out what a proposed monetary goal would be. How much would it cost us to build a new building? What would be in that building that we could cut or add that's needed here from the mission planning study? We also did, obviously, the presence and likelihood of the philanthropic support needed to build the building. We talked about volunteer leadership candidates, campaign timing, competition for future fundraising, participants' own willingness to support the effort, and other thoughts, ideas, and strategies and tactics. I think it's very fitting tonight that we've talked about the Blue Streak and what downtown revitalization is needed here, what you all are trying to accomplish. As a Salvation Army, we want to support that. We want to be good community partners, right? It does us all no good for us to be right here in the middle of what you guys are trying to accomplish. We all understand the visuals and optics associated with that. The new shelter basically would be a combination in one building of our three existing buildings that we use for support or for services. It would be a shelter. It would be a food pantry. It would be a soup kitchen, and it would be our social services office, all in one building. At the end of the day, the consultant came up with a few things, and I don't think anything's going to shock you guys. We obviously have a very strong mission alignment. Every Hopkinsville has humanity. They have the need and want to help those less fortunate. There's a lot of widespread respect for what we do. I think everybody understands the big role we play here, keeping people in their homes, keeping them fed, making sure they have the needs, their needs met. The community acknowledges the need. We all understand what the need is. The homeless issue is a growing issue, and we are the logical response to help you address that. At the end of the day, it came down to, a lot of the people that were interviewed simply said, we need to move from downtown. We need to move out, as you guys talk about revitalization, as you talk about tourism, as you talk about business development. A lot of people said that our mission didn't fit in that narrative. We don't disagree. We don't agree. We're simply taking what the consultant said and what the community feels. We're here again to be community supporters, not community distractors. The location that we talked about, and we actually have two offers for land further down the road on the other side of the railroad tracks. It still keeps us viable for those that don't have transportation, for those that need to walk to our facility, and those where the need is. And so, we talked about what does that look like? The facility location for a lot of the philanthropic support that we've talked about that is needed is kind of the, it's the trigger pin, right? It's the deal breaker. The current site is a major barrier to donor support and some of the public confidence that they have in what we're doing. Again, we want to be computed, community supporters. So, how can we all work together to make sure that our mission, which is to meet human need without discrimination, is still a priority, but that we also support your community's mission and your priority of downtown revitalization? but that we also support your community's mission and your priority of downtown revitalization? The shelter cost has gone back and forth, I think we finally settled on something. The original concept that we drew up with a local architect here was about twelve million dollars. It was a lot, it's a lot for this community, it's a lot for us to take on, and it's a lot of upkeep and long-term building maintenance and that sort of thing. We've scaled it back based on some of the comments of the people that we interviewed for the studies. We're probably settled at about eight and a half million. It's strictly the construction cost. We all understand construction costs these days are not what they were last year, they're certainly not what they were three years ago, and definitely five years ago. And certainly by the time we break ground, they're gonna be different than what they are today as I stand here. We're probably right at about eight and a half million dollars for a basic building that keeps the same number of beds we have, maybe a few more. Again, we're putting three buildings into one, it's gonna cost us a little bit more. We're putting offices in, the food pantry, the kitchen with commercial-grade equipment, all that costs a little more. We've set the goal right about there. We've gone through comments, some of the campaign prerequisites. We have not confirmed the new site, I think a lot of what will happen next over the next couple of months, and again, this is just a report, I'm just saying this is where we are, this is where we want to go with you, but it's going to take a lot more discussion amongst all of us to get there. This is not something we're just going to do overnight. We have a timeline, thirty months was what the consultant represented, presented as far as what he thinks it would take us to get to the monetary goal. We've actually scaled that back, we think we can do it in about twenty, and I'll tell you why on the next slide. So far, as of today, we've secured two-point-four million from the Kentucky Economic Cabinet. We did that through a grant program. We put in our grant application that we really are going to build a new shelter or renovate our old shelter. We've secured an additional five-hundred-thousand dollars in pledges, private donors, people that want to see us succeed, that want to help out the people here in need, but also want to see us move across the tracks. We feel like at the end of the day, there's about five-point-six million dollars needed to raise, to make this dream a reality. Now, there's a couple of different ways to do that. Obviously, we would be interested in selling you guys our land, I think you would be interested in taking it. There's a couple of different governmental opportunities we could pursue, but most importantly, we're going to need your all's help, the community's help, the big supporters in this town, the investors that want to invest in downtown are gonna have to be a part of this. We cannot break ground without having eighty percent of this eight-point-five million dollars in our bank. We want to be community supporters, we also want to meet our mission. Five-point-six is where we're at. There's more discussion that's going to have to happen, I'm gonna encourage you all to reach out to us. We don't mind to have a group meeting, an individual meeting, we can talk through what a building looks like, we're currently getting a new design. As I said, our initial building was bells and whistles. This one's gonna be a little more bare bones, but it's still gonna fit our need. It's still gonna fit what the need of this community. And so as we go down the road, I would offer you guys the chance to A, ask some questions here tonight, but to B, most importantly, let's have conversation, we need continued conversation. We need people in this community to step up and help us do this, we cannot do it on our own. We want to be community partners, it's going to take all of us. We want to support downtown revitalization, but at the end of the day, our mission is number one, meeting human need, and that will always be at the forefront of all of our conversations. But we want to be partners in this with you guys as well. And so I open it up to now for a few questions, and if not, I certainly hope to see you guys in the next coming months as we work through this. Again, we put ourselves on about a twenty-month time limit. If we don't feel that we can get it done, or the conversation's not going well, the money's not coming in, then we will probably have to look at renovating the old shelter. And that will be a whole nother discussion that we'll all have again together. But again, we're being supportive of what's happening here, we want to honor that. And I thank you for your time and attention today.
Thank you, Chris.
I don't mind, I'll ask.
Yep.
So I just got a couple of things that I was trying to keep up with you going through that. What percentage of our residents are for Christian County here?
Sure, that is.
It doesn't. Okay, and what percentage of funding do other counties send to here to help run or facilitate the needs for what you all are doing?
So most of our funding that we receive now is federal and state.
Okay, so no local funding?
Well, we receive donations locally, but I believe the Christian County gives us a two-thousand-dollar grant a year. Other than that, I believe we get thirty thousand from the United Way, seventy thousand from that P C.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know, yeah. Make it now.
But Alicia, if you want to come up, Alicia is our director of social services, so please.
Perfect. Daily basis, right? So I know that's one of the things that I continue to hear in the community and have for years, even as my former role, was about the amount of services for people that are here using the benefits in Christian County that aren't from here. And that's gonna be one of the hurdles to, to educate and understand, I think, just like the location is. The location is gonna be.
United Way is fundraising in the three counties of Christian Todd and Trigg. And we do receive United Way funding, we have not directly sought funding from other counties, but we are receiving as a whole from United Way.
But currently, so that's something that when we're wanting to do something bigger and better, that we know is an option to seek out other counties who we are helping, because they don't have it. If we build it, they're gonna come, right? So the bigger we get, the more programs we offer, the better our outreach is, the more people we're gonna bring into our county also.
I, I go back to the statement that I made, we're not building a bigger shelter, we're building.
I'm glad you said that, because that's my next question. That's my next question.
Please don't say this is bigger and better, it's a new building. It's just putting all of our services in one building with the same amount of support that we offer right now.
How often are we full?
Regularly.
Are we having to turn people down?
Regularly.
That's, that's the part where, when I'm looking at eight million, or I'm looking at twelve million, it's a lot of money. But if we're saying we need this service and it's so in demand, I don't want to build something too little to be coming back in five years going, we need more.
But this is where, what we want to use this is as a incentive. The twenty-four-seven contact allows our case managers to move people, our case managers, they have access to our clients. Right now, they leave seven-thirty in the morning, they may have made some amnesia, we have federal dollars for rapid rehousing, we can get someone in their own place in their thirty-sixty-minute. And so we have access to the client, we're moving people to the self-reliability a lot faster. That's our goal, our goal is not housing for a long term. It's to get them from being homeless into home, into their own home, and we have the funds available through our E R S two, through our C O C grant, or E D C, and federal state grant. So even though it looks, oh, we have thirty beds, it's moving them faster. Because we have regular access to them, twenty-four-seven, we're providing them breakfast, lunch, dinner. We're providing them the skills to bring in people, help them to manage their money, so that they can reuse rehousing, and we can rehouse them anywhere in the county route area. They're not restricted, they may have this, they can move anywhere, but we have access. So that's where the same-sized facility, the same bed count, it becomes a, it plays out because we're moving them faster. We're bringing up there a lot faster, and they're not saying where they have to sit outside to operate there. They're going through our programs to get into their own place to go there.
Currently, it's not twenty-four hour, right? Currently, it's been the way it has been the last year, we kinda, and, and I know that's a, for me, that'll be a must. Like that twenty-four-seven i- is an absolute must.
Success is that access to our clients. Right now, we can give them the opportunity, they meet with our, our shelter manager, who's beginning after their student commission stay. We give them the programs that we have available and the opportunity to set up for you to our case managers, because this is what they do. Hopefully, it's forced them to come.
Sure.
And so that's where, but having that regular access, having access to our life navigation program, when people say, what does that mean, it's exactly what it says. It helps people to navigate through what we all learn in hospital health, right? Those that don't know how to balance a budget, how to manage their finances, we can bring that too in that life navigation.
Kind of like, I can't remember the name of the program they have in Texas, it's, it's a whole community, basically.
Haven of Hope, Hope Campus.
Hope Campus, is that what it was called? I can't remember what it was called, but we're all, all the resources are in-house.
And then partnering with, with local banks, if you come in, I mean, my degree is to have a foundation account. So to help teach somebody how to balance a budget, that's what we can do on this project. I want you to not just look at it as, oh, you're giving them the same debt, it's just a gate, a bigger program. I hope that answered your question.
How good information? One of, one of the biggest things that came out of our consultant's plan, and again, we spent months and months doing this, is, quite frankly, the city, the community would not support the twelve-million-dollar building. We wanted it bigger, we wouldn't mind a few extra beds, again, we're turning people away every day. Unfortunately, one of the comments that came up was, the Salvation Army shouldn't have the nicest building in the community. We don't want them to have a twelve-million-dollar shiny building, we want them to just meet the need. And so, I appreciate you wanting us to have a new building, or a bigger building. I think it probably deserved in this community, but the community itself is probably not ready to support something like that.
I would agree, especially if the location doesn't change.
Exactly.
Thank you all.
Any other questions for Mr. Chris Head? All right.
Thank y'all so very much, Chris, thank y'all. All righty. Item B on eight is recycling services, I need to see, we got Brian Silver and Wendell Lynch. It's up.
Good evening, and I'm Wendell Lynch, Brian Silver, our general manager is with, here with us also. And at your last council meeting, I think you made it clear that you wanted options for your commercial recycling. We've already dealt with the residential piece, so our board has met and discussed that. And so Brian's gonna kind of walk you through the options that we have put together. They should have been in your packet, and if they're available through video, they can be brought up on the screen. And also I want to apologize for our chairperson, Lee Durden, she wasn't able to be here tonight because of prior commitment. She would have loved to make this presentation, but with, with her being absent, Brian and I will attempt to do it. We will also engage in a question that you may have afterwards, or any other thoughts for discussion. So at this point, I'm gonna yield to Brian if you bring those proposals up, the next slide, I believe. There you go, okay. Brian, I'll give you the podium.
All right, so we've come up with two options to address this issue. The first one we got is actually turning it into just picking it up like trash, like we would normal trash. This, this would involve, standard weight rates would apply for garbage, so that would go up just a little bit compared to where we're at for the, for the recycle. Our second option is to just have us take care of it until, until we can get a contractor in here to do it. And we're, we're thinking, what that would look like is we could open it up to a bid process of about two weeks. We think we could have a contractor or some arrangement met by November, and we could turn that over to the, to the contractor on the thirty-first of December. In this option, the city would actually be putting the bill for that to the tune of about twenty thousand a month until December thirty-first. But with that plan, we wouldn't have any gaps in services, the industrial park would continue to get their services, so they wouldn't have any, you know, gaps in service that might make them, you know, on, on their policies, some of the folks out in the industrial park have policies that are zero waste of landfills and such in recycling initiatives, so those wouldn't be sacrificed. So those are our two options, is there anything I can, any questions I can answer about those?
Mayor, I got a couple of questions.
Mr. Crabtree.
So Brian, under the first option, and solid waste is a service, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so under, let's say option A, the business that is receiving the service pays for that service?
Yes, sir, absolutely, the, the business would take the, would take the, the brunt of that.
They're not getting the recycling services, but they are having the material removed, correct?
Right, and, you know, we could take care of that, it would just move over to our standard trash rates, which we enclose there in the, in the board packets.
Okay, under the second option, the businesses, now how many businesses, commercial businesses participate in recycling?
We have a hundred and fifty-nine businesses that, that are involved in the recycle program, and twenty-four businesses in the industrial park.
Oh, under two hundred?
Yes, sir.
So basically, we're talking about, if we go with option B, for three months, we're going to pay twenty-sixty and seventy-five thousand dollars to allow these under-two-hundred businesses to, to empty their recycling, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so if we go back to city council paying that, and, or the city paying that, that means that everybody in town, businesses, individuals are paying, their tax dollars are paying that bill, correct?
That's correct.
All the questions are done?
Any other questions? Brian, Miss Lynch. Running. Thank you, sir.
Are you looking for a motion, or?
Hold on just a second. No, we're not looking for a motion yet, because we have to go down, that's their report for that.
Okay.
That's their report, their, their report on recycling, what we've had, had him look at.
Got it.
I'm running. Monthly financial statements, Ms. Willis Clay.
All right, good evening. Let's go in here. It's my pleasure to bring you guys the August monthly financial report, so we'll start with our inter-fund transfers. We had three inter-fund transfers during the month of August. Fifteen hundred dollars to the Hop Town Hoppers, a thousand dollars went to Junior Auxiliary, and a thousand dollars went to the museum gala. Total inter-fund transfers for August were three-thousand-five-hundred dollars, total inter-fund transfers for the year six thousand, so we have ninety-four thousand remaining in the inter-fund account. Our payroll tax for August did rebound. I kind of associate that with probably in July and August, we had different people pay third payers. So we are showing an increase in equivalent payroll for the year at two-point-five-eight percent. We've collected three million, seven forty-seven, five twenty-nine through two months, which is about twenty thousand dollars more than what we budgeted. Our insurance premium tax is continuing to come in strong, we have an increase in our equivalent insurance premiums of eleven-point-six-one percent so far through two months. And our business licenses is continuing to come in below last year to decrease right now about forty-point-nine-one percent. We still don't have any property tax to report on, so we'll go into our general fund balance. We started the year with prior year incumbents of three-seventeen, nine-oh-four. We've collected year-to-date eight million, eight-oh-nine, one forty-three, and we have spent nine million, eight-eighty-eight, oh-seventy-one. So currently, for the year, we're showing more expenses than revenue to the tune of a seven-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand and twenty-four dollars. I will go ahead and tell you guys now that August was a three-pay month for us, and so because of that, our expenses are higher right now than normal. So when you look at our fund balance comparison between last year and this year, we are running about two... we are running about $200,000 more, more expense over last year than we'd had this time. So we've had year-to-date revenue of the $8,809,143 in our year-to-date expenses. So we have more expense than revenue of $1,078,928 so far this year. Our municipal road aid fund, we started the year with $353,535. We've collected $97,187. We have spent $473,315. So we have more expenses in our MRA fund as well of $22,593. In our capital fund, we started the year with $967,863 in prior year incumbences. We've collected $530,022, and we have spent $1,278,957. So we are positive in the capital fund of $218,928, although we do have $963,552 in incumbences. So as we look at each of our departmental expenses, you'll notice every department is going to be over budget for the most part because of our three-pay month in August. So admin is at 17.39, the tax department's at 26.02, information technology's at 31.12, and legislative is at 16.16. In our public safety, our police department is at 18.22, ECC is at 20.69, the fire department's at 18.23, EMS is at 20.91, and fire prevention is at 15.24. In our public works department, public works admin's at 18.5, city maintenance was at 16.49, Fort Campbell contracts at 11.41, the service center is at 16.88, Parks and Rec was at 22.74, the Sports Plex is at 14.27, and the aquatic center is at 53.06. So overall, total general fund expenses were at 17.27% for two months. Municipal road aid was at 28.17, and the capital fund is at 28.14. So our general fund cash balance, we started the year at $18,269,128. Plus our year-to-date receipts minus our year-to-date expenses gives us our cash balance August 31st at $17,192,000. We have $86,824 in incumbences. So our available cash is at $17,103,376. So our available cash minus our two reserve accounts gives our unassigned cash fund balance of $15,428,289, and that is at 33.13% of our adjusted operating budget. So you can see our comparison between August 31st of '24 and August 31st of '25. We're still very comparable with where we were at this time last year. Our KLC investment fund, we've collected so far year-to-date interest, $4,0345. So our cash fund balance on August 31st was $1,222,459. And you see our market value there is at $1,288,45. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about August financials.
Questions from Ms. Clayton on the financials?
Remember, we do three, we have twice a year where we do three paychecks a month. And we do take a hit in the departments then. Come November, we'll let you know about those business licenses. It is our belief that they're waiting to pay when they have to, and not a moment sooner. And I understand, they have the option to hold on to their funds and draw interest, and they're taking that option. And I completely understand.
We're hoping for the best in November, right now, because everybody's holding off paying. Everybody got an extension, so everybody's holding their money. All right. Any other, anything from Ms. Clayton?
I was asked, Mr. Mayor, I was asked a question earlier, what, what is our, you know, what is basically the unencumbered unrestricted cash reserve of the city at this point?
I would call that our unassigned cash fund balance is $15,428,289.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Clayton. All righty. Item nine, approval amendment for September the 2nd, 2025 regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion. Amy, second by Clayton. On that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we got that done. Move into item 10, ordinances. Ordinance 24-2025, special purpose vehicles, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS Chapter 186 on highways and streets in the city of Hopkinsville and establishing restrictions for operation. Whereas the Kentucky General Assembly passed Senate Bill 63 to authorize local governments to adopt ordinances to allow street legal special purpose vehicles as defined in KRS Chapter 186 to operate upon highways within its jurisdiction. And whereas Senate Bill 63 contains equipment requirements for and restricts operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on all highways, including those in local governments that allow operation by ordinance. And whereas the City Council for the City of Hopkinsville determines that the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles on authorized highways is beneficial to the city and its residents. And whereas the City of Hopkinsville reserves its right to impose additional restrictions on the operation of street legal special purpose vehicles. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, definitions, as used in this ordinance shall have the following meaning. 1. Cabinet means the Kentucky Department of Transportation. 2. Highway shall have the same meaning as defined in KRS 186.0102. And 3. Street legal special purpose vehicles shall have the same meaning as defined in Senate Bill 63 as codified in KRS 186.077. Section 2, authorized use. 1. Street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by Senate Bill 63 and codified in KRS 186.077 shall be authorized to operate on designated highways within the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. 2. Operation of a street legal special purpose vehicles as defined by KRS 186.077 shall be subject to state law requirements and restrictions, including any regulations adopted by the cabinet. 3. The operator of a street legal special purpose vehicle, when operated on public roadways, shall be properly licensed to operate a motor vehicle per KRS 186.410. 4. The operation of a street legal special purpose vehicle shall be limited to highways within the city having a posted speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less. 5. Any passenger of a street legal special purpose vehicle under the age of 18 shall wear a protective helmet at all times the vehicle is being operated within the city limits. Section 3. If any part of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or unforeseeable, unforcible, the remaining parts shall remain in force and effect. Section 4. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Need a motion? Clayton, second by Amy. Any discussion? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bogard? Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner? That passes on second reading.
Item B, ordinance 25-2025, repeal of 93.07, commercial recycling, second reading.
An ordinance repealing Section 93.07, commercial recycling of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances pertaining to commercial recycling rates. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that Section 93.07, commercial recycling of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances is hereby repealed in its entirety. Section 2. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? Discussion? Call clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
No.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
That passes on second reading.
Okay. Ordinance 26-2025, FYI, 25-26, operational budget amendment, second reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, a summary, Section 1 of Ordinance 172025, adopting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026, is hereby amended as follows. Revenues, general fund, $56,653,517. Municipal road aid, $1,326,507. Prior year, $1,023,94. Total revenues, $59,418. Expenses, general fund, $57,673,091. Municipal road aid fund, $1,326,507. Total expenses, $59,418, surplus zero. Section 2, the full text of this ordinance is on file in the office of the undersigned city clerk of the City of Hopkinsville, 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Need a motion? Clayton?
Second.
By Mike? All righty. Any discussion? None, call clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
That passes on second reading.
All righty. Item D, ordinance 27-2025, 2025, property tax rate, first reading.
I do want to note before I read the ordinance, there was a public hearing this morning at 10:00, and there were no comments received. An ordinance providing for and making the property tax levy for city purposes for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, for city purposes for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, there is hereby made a tax levy of 20.2 cents on each $100 of taxable real property, 23.9 cents on each $100 of taxable personal property, and 25.1 cents on each $100 of taxable motor vehicle and watercraft property. Additionally, a tax levy and ad valorem tax of 1 and 1/2 cents on each $100 of the fair cash value of all unmanufactured tobacco subject to taxation within the city limits is imposed upon each establishment, firm, company, or corporation handling and processing the same, except as otherwise exempt. And a tax levy and ad valorem tax of 4 and 1/2 cents on each $100 of the fair cash value of any unmanufactured agricultural product subject to taxation within the city limits is imposed upon each establishment, firm, company, or corporation handling and processing the same, except as otherwise exempt. All levies herein shall be deposited into the general fund for the general operation of city government. A discount of 2% shall be allowed on all taxes except motor vehicle and watercraft property taxes in the amount of $1 or more paid by October 31, 2025. And the total tax due shall be collected from November 1, 2025 through November 30, 2025. All taxes except motor vehicle and watercraft property taxes levied herewith, which remain unpaid on December 1, 2025, shall begin to accrue attach and be added from said date, a flat penalty of 10% unto the total amount of said taxes then due and payable. Additionally, tax bills not paid before December 1, 2025 shall have added to them interest at the rate of 1/2% per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty and interest as provided herein shall be added to unpaid taxes and collected by the city. Should the tax return become delinquent, the city administrator, the chief financial officer, and/or city attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of such delinquency. Section 2. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3. And in all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion.
So moved.
Amy?
Second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Call the clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Bogard?
No.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Drouin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
That passes on first reading.
Item 11, municipal orders. Municipal order 40-2025, inner-city res fund reprogramming.
Upon recommendation from the legacy Hopkinsville Committee, Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the following reprogramming of funds within the inner-city residential enterprise zone budget. Amount 83,0967 demolition to downtown incentive programs. Amount 83,0967 total.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by Don. Any questions?
Good question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Last meeting, didn't we move, we moved three pots of money into something else? What was that?
That was in the rental rehab into, uh...
Okay.
That was, no, that was, that was, that was CDBG money, that was.
Okay.
Yeah, that was parking lot money.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. Okay. Let me get it right here. Sorry about that. Uh, any more discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Item 12, other. We have any other in business we need to be discussing right now? No other business? All right. Item 13, council member comments. We have any comments from council members?
I'd like to take an opportunity, if I may, Mr. Mayor, to just invite everyone from the city up to Rough Park on Saturday, September the 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00. We have just a, in my ward, I'm sponsoring a community forum, and a couple really fun items. Thanks, thank, thank you to the Hopkinsville Police Department for coming out with cookout, cookout with the cop. They'll be there. Also, the Hopkinsville Fire Department will be there with touch a truck. And so we have Military Affairs Committee will be there with some, some cornhole boards and just some other items that we'll have besides the fact that Rough Park is just a fun place for the kids to run, have a good time. And so I just want to invite everyone there. Everything's free, and we just, you know, appreciate not only the city departments for coming, but also you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out and answering citizens' questions and that kind of thing. Our city managers, well, thank you, our city administrator, thank you for your cooperation and all. And we have, especially during the summer salute, and hats off to Toby for scheduling that during the cooler time of year. Thank you. And it was great. We, we've handed out a thousand little flyers, both in my ward and at the summer salute for that. So we'd like to just give the citizens an opportunity to get together and just pose their questions to the city departments. And so thankful for your help and your support in that. Amanda Brunt as well, our PIO. So thank you so much for your help and everything that's happening. So we want to invite everyone, please come.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So everyone, please come to Rough Park for Board Three. All right. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I will move into item 14, Ward Five.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to share a quote with you. This is by Martin Luther King Jr., and it's something that's been kind of heavy on my mind over the last week with lots of recent events. And, and I don't know that a lot more needs to be said, but I, I think this quote is applicable not just here in our community, but throughout our country. And it was said, "Nonviolence is the answer to the crucial political and moral questions of our time. The need for man to overcome oppression and violence without resorting to oppression and violence. Man must evolve for all human conflict, a method which rejects revenge, aggression, and retaliation." and retaliation. The foundation of such a method is love." And with that, I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second. A motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.